All right, good evening. The time being 7:00 PM on January 8th. A forum of the planning board being present. Call this meeting to order. I'll let anybody in the audience who's here for Agenda Item D, which is 1438 Main Street, Agenda Item E, which is 1879 Main Street, and Agenda Item H, which is 770 Main Street. All three of those are being continued to our next meeting. I'm sorry, I take it back. Two of them are being continued to our next meeting. One is being continued to our February meeting. So if you're here for any of those, be free to leave. We won't be doing anything with those. You will not miss anything. All right, with that out of the way, we start with Agenda Item A, which is approval of minutes for October 30th and November 13th.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. Do I have to approve these individually, or?
We don't have to, but we typically do.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the planning board meeting minutes from the October 30th, 2023 meeting.
All right, a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimous.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the planning board meeting minutes of November 13th, 2023.
I have a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. It all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimous. Moving on to Agenda Item B, Agenda Item B1. Any committee reports any of the members wish to make at this time?
I'll say it, Mr. Chairman.
All right, don't hear any? So Agenda Item B2, which is Town Planner's Report. Slav.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of items here to note on the horizon for our January 22nd meeting. We have three new hearings scheduled. The first two are for 1992 and 1220 Main Street respectively, both for Dunkin' Donuts locations to install electric menu boards, which count in our bylaw as electronic message signs. So that'll be two items. And then the third item is 1695 Shaw Sheen Street. You'll note that that was a previously approved site plan review for a cannabis location, and they are making some minor adjustments to their stormwater and their parking, which does trigger a formal review. So they'll be with us on January 22nd. Next item of note, the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments, better known as NIMCOG, is inviting the surrounding communities, including its board members and municipal staff, to the next step, what they're calling the conversation about addressing homelessness and housing in the greater Lowell region, and they're calling it the At Home in Greater Lowell Project. It is a year-long planning process, which residents of the greater Lowell area and experts from local, state, and federal levels of government will be invited to come together and develop solutions for our region's most pressing housing problems. They are having a kickoff summit on Tuesday, February 13th, from 1:00 to 5:00 PM. Further details to be noted. And they are also looking for members of their steering committee. They have five currently. They're hoping to have 15. And if anybody is interested in joining that, board members or audience members alike, you can feel free to reach out to me, and I can hook you up with the folks at NIMCOG. And the last item of note is that the Conservation Commission is hosting its second wetland bylaw revision outreach meeting on January 18th via Microsoft Teams, and that'll be held from 5:30 to 7:00 PM. And any folks with any questions about some of the rewrites, the proposed changes, can reach out to the Conservation Agent Joe Fontaine. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item B3, which is 120 Lumber Lane Special Permit Extension.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Paul Ross. I'm an attorney representing the applicant. I'd like to start out by saying I represent 120 Lumber Lane. Joe Phelan is the principal. He was unfortunately not able to attend tonight due to medical reasons. He apologizes for that. So we have before the board tonight seeking an extension of a special permit that was issued in 2020. There are two components to that. One is the renewal of the actual special permit, which grants zoning uses that were historically approved of the site. And the second part is an update on the construction compliance for prior building code issues. To date, the applicant has completed all of the construction review and work in five of the six buildings, which is still trying to complete Building 1. Building 1 is the original lumberyard building, constructed quite a while ago before the building codes. It has taken some time for the architects and engineers to draft up plans and a compliance plan as well. They completed that by the end of November of last year, submitted it to the town. Building Department for a view. The upshot of that is a couple of areas of work that needed to be done, primarily relating around mezzanines that were being used that didn't comply with the code for one reason or another. Those mezzanines will not be used going forward, so that the construction work is primarily related to removal of the mezzanines or removal of access to them. And then another item that came up is there's an attic space in the building that was previously not sprinklered. The entire tenant spaces in the building had been sprinklered. That was one thing that had to be checked under the special permit. But the attic space was never required to be before. It is now. The applicant has had plans run up and a permit issued. That work is about 90% complete on the attic sprinkler. So the remaining work is primarily in tenant spaces. We have all of those permits. Five out of the eight units require some level of building permit work. Those permit applications were made on the 4th of December. We're just waiting for Building Department review on that. We've had a few comments and addressed them. We still don't have permits issued yet. Expect them shortly. There is some warm weather work that has to be done, mostly with access to the building's doors and some concrete work and things like that. So there'll be some times needed to get this done. The applicant has pinnacle construction working on all the construction issues, and they expect to be able to complete all of the work within six months of the permits being issued. So tonight, we're asking for an extension on just the construction-related issues until July 31st, at which time we would provide an update to the, either to the board or to the planning department by letter when we close out all the permits on that remaining work. That would bring the building back into compliance with respect to the building permit issues. And then the second extension, as I mentioned before, is the extension of the overall permit. The underlying permit had a requirement to renew it every three years. Last year, when we appeared before you, you made the renewal to be the same period of time for construction as well as for the renewal of the underlying permit. So we made it one year. We're here before you today. So we would be asking for an extension of the underlying permit plus the extension of the construction compliance period. And if you have any questions.
Mr. Fertali?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm glad to hear the things are progressing. You know, Mr. Phelan's been in the business a long time here, and I'd like to see it going forward, which I think it is. So with regard to Building 1, is it occupied or vacant now?
It's occupied. It's fully occupied with tenants.
So you're working with tenants in the building and working around people and so forth and so on?
That's correct. Once the permits are issued, there's some coordination with the tenants. In one particular instance, there's a mezzanine that has to be completely removed that the tenant is using, so we have to provide some alternative space for them and then get them out, do the work, bring them back in.
Okay. So is that hampering your progress as far as with tenants being in there? It seems like it would.
It certainly is. It certainly is, and part of it is the juggling. So we don't have permits yet, so we can't schedule their moves in and out. It did in the other buildings. It also was a problem for there. We were able to move tenants around with some other spaces we had. It just takes time.
Sure.
It's coordination time.
So my understanding, five of the six buildings are completed, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So just going, Building 1 is the last remaining project, so. But then I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lozotti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, glad to see progress is being made here. Just one quick question on the date for the extension. I heard you mention July 31st, 2024. The letter that we have here says July 30th, 2024.
July 30th is fine.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that, assuming that's not gonna make a huge difference. But yeah, other than that, I have no additional questions.
Mr. Chairman?
Echo Mr. Fertali's comments when you came before us a year ago. It's nice to see a lot of progress. Certainly can't be easy trying to coordinate things around tenants and disrupting them. So I have no questions about the permit extensions themselves. I did want to ask, just in your tenants' interest, if you're sprinkling the attic, is it a heated attic or is it insulated? I know a lot of times you have to prevent those sprinklers from freezing, or the pipes will burst, especially in the kind of winters we can have around here.
Correct. So it's an unused attic. It's an institutional space. It's not reused at all by any of the tenants or the landlord. The tenant spaces are all heated with a wet system, excuse me, sprinkled with a wet system. The attic had to be sprinkled with a dry system, so there's a separate system for that. They're tied together, but there will be no water charged in the pipes in the attic, so there won't be any heating issues.
Okay. That's fantastic. I just remember at the wind, when they'd finished their renovations, they had wet sprinklers in the, I think it was the roof of the cafeteria or something like that, and it wasn't insulated well enough.
Yep.
You know, our first winter, we had a bad break, so. Sounds great. I have no further comments.
Yeah, no real comments, except at the end of your letter, you mentioned that you were gonna bring in a compliance table?
We could submit that. We were hoping to have some permits issued, and they would have been issued unit by unit. So we submitted the overall plan, and then that was with the sprinkler submission. That work, like I said, has been permitted and started. All of the five units are still waiting permit issuance, so the status is the same for all of them. The permits have been submitted, but not issued.
Would you just send an updated one in, you know?
Sure. Absolutely.
Earliest you can, just for the file? Otherwise, I'm all set. So what is the pleasure of the board as to the two extension requests?
Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion that we approve the extension for the construction till July 30th, '24, correct?
Thank you.
As submitted, yep?
Exactly.
And?
Two pieces, right?
Yeah.
The extension on the?
And the second extension, you're looking for a three-year extension, correct, from the original special permit that we issued?
Correct.
Okay. With that, I'm making a motion that we approve both of those as requested.
All right. Motion made in second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimous.
I thought we were doing them one at a time, so.
Thanks, sir. Those ones are okay. We can do those.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to Agenda Item C, which is 1167, 1177, 1187 Main Street. As we start the regular hearings, I'll let everybody know who is here, just as a reminder. You look up here, you see four members of the board. So anything that comes to a vote tonight, you know, we'll ask any of the applicants if they want to move forward with that, knowing that we have only the four members, and in the event that you need four votes, you need all four. So that'll be up to the applicants to decide, but I'll just give you that heads up. Did we get that fixed? Moment of truth? All right, I want you folks to settle. If you just give your names to the record, the floor will be yours.
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Dawn Bornstein. My office is located 12 Chestnut Street in Andover. I'm with Johnson &amp; Bornstein. We're the attorney representing the applicants, the Barubi family. Garrett Barubi is with us, as well as the rest of our development team. Mira Cousins, a project engineer, she gets the technology up, and it looks like it's working nicely. I'll turn it over to her. You'll remember, we opened this some time ago. It's a multifamily dwelling project in the fairly new Town Center District. We've got some updates on the plan, I believe, to present to you, and I believe we're fairly far along in this process now. So with that, I will turn it over to Mira, and we're looking for a use special permit for the multifamily dwelling, a site plan approval, and a major land disturbance permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. I'm Mira Cousins, Civil Design Consultants. So we opened the hearing on November 13th. We presented the project proposal. We received positive feedback from you. After that meeting, we received the second peer review letter from the town's consultant on November 16th. The remaining comments in that letter were pretty minor. We addressed all their technical comments. We submitted the revised material on December 21st. We haven't received a letter from the peer reviewer yet, but as I said earlier, the remaining comments were minor and mostly related to construction details and the operation and maintenance plan. So to give you a quick recap of the project, we're proposing a four-story, 24-unit multifamily building with 26 parking spaces at the garage level and 36 spaces at the exterior parking lot. So based on the use, the required number of parking spaces is 60, and we're proposing 62 spaces. The second part of the project is to relocate a portion of the existing house that's located on 1167 Main Street and moving that over to the McClellan Oil Lot and converting that into an office building. So with that, I'll walk through the changes we made to the plans since the last time we were here. So if you look at the plan behind you here, we originally showed steps near the northwest corner of the site over here, if you can see my cursor. That connected the patio area to the sidewalk along Main Street. Due to accessibility, we eliminated those steps, and now the patio wraps around the building and connects to the front door of the building here. We had added additional stop bars and signage in the parking lot for safety reasons. We raised the parking lot grades by approximately six inches based on the recent test pits we dug for the proposed subsurface infiltration system. This in turn required the slab of the building to be raised by six inches as well. So at the last meeting, some of the board members wanted to know how the lighting will look along the front of the building facing Main Street. So in our last revised submittal, we included a lighting plan. Also, Jack's office put together a pretty cool video showing how the site looks nighttime and daytime, and I'd like to share that video with you, and I hope it works this time. For some reason, this one's freezing.
You have two videos working one night.
Yeah, that's impossible, yeah. Let me try that again.
It's impossible.
Yeah, for some reason, that does not want to work. Try one more time here. Okay, doesn't want to get past that spot for some reason. But that's pretty much it.
Just see.
Okay.
Nighttime video was so good, I kind of want to see the daytime video.
Yeah. All right, give me a minute here. So we have the light fixtures on top of the wall. And that is it. Anything to add, Dawn? Yeah, so happy to take any questions.
All right, well, we'll start with Mr. Chairman.
So myself, I don't see any progress.
Excuse me, your mic's not on.
Thank you, Alex. So I like the progress. I like seeing the lighting plan, especially the nighttime rendering. Very nice. It looks great. It seems like you're getting on board with engineering. Are we in full compliance here, or are there still issues being ironed out?
We feel like we've addressed all the technical comments. Really, the only thing in that last review letter were pretty minor, related to like the operation maintenance plan.
So we're just waiting on comments from the December 21st submission, basically?
Right, right, yeah, exactly.
Should have that any day, but I just don't have it yet.
Yeah.
Okay. Other than that, I don't really see anything different than some of the things we talked before. It looks like it's all being addressed. We just need that final confirmation from the DPW Town Engineer, but everything looks great.
Thank you.
Mr. Lozotti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, agreed, the project looks great. I like the renderings. Just one thing that stood out to me on the, specifically the night video, is there any lighting in between the office building and the multifamily residential building on that walkway? Just kind of looked a little bit, I don't know if it was just the rendering in the video, but it looked a little bit dark, kind of, going down there.
So we have wall lights on this building, and then the last light fixture is over here. So the wall light on this building provides lighting along the sidewalk here.
I think specifically the part that looks kind of, almost where you see the permeable paver sort of box going in.
In this area?
Yeah, kind of just heading down the back along that walkway.
We have two wall lights on the side as well, so that provide lighting along that.
All right, so there's probably lighting there, it just might have been the render in the video.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Okay. And then I think the only other question I saw in one of the engineering reviews, there were some comments about potentially where you would locate a school bus stop for students who would reside here. Any thoughts on where that would go?
School bus stop. You got that? Okay.
Hi, Dick Yucco from Woodland Design. Usually what happens on that, Mr. Lozotti, is that the school department really dictates where that goes. I don't really see one maybe going in this area, but there is room. If you look at the driveway, looking at it to the right of the driveway, there's a little bit of land over there. That's back on the grass. That's probably where we would put one, if we were going to suggest one. But usually, that's not within the control of the developer. We're happy to do it, but we would defer to the school department.
All right, that's all the questions I have.
Mr. Fertali?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I liked the videos. I've seen both of them, and they were great. So are you removing cherry trees? Is that what I read on this report here somewhere?
Yes, there was a comment from the peer reviewer that the cherry tree roots are quite, it spreads pretty far, so we removed that. We had some along this area of the parking lot, near the subsurface infiltration basin, so we removed the cherry trees that were in that location to address that.
Were you putting anything back in this place?
Yeah, I put some evergreen trees there.
Okay, so that's where, again?
Over here, in this corner.
Okay.
We do have those cherry trees elsewhere, but just, we removed it where the subsurface system was located.
I got you, okay. So now we're okay with the fire department, I believe, correct? Is that been resolved, right?
Yeah, we did receive a review letter, and yeah, we comply with, yeah.
Okay. And so are we waiting for a peer review letter, too?
Yeah, based on the latest submittal, we submitted December 21st, and we just haven't received a review letter.
From them?
From them, correct.
All right. With that, I'm all set. The project looks great. I'm looking forward to resolving some outstanding issues and moving forward. So I'll say it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Yeah, I don't really have anything to add. Obviously, I got a few things outstanding, so we'll have to deal with those. I like the pole lighting for the front. I mentioned that one before.
Yeah.
I think it just makes it look nice across the front. But other than that, all the renderings are good, videos, so no issues for me. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, bring it back to the board. What is the pleasure of the board?
To discuss the lighting.
Oh, wait a minute, hold on.
To see if it's a big condition with my name on it.
Can we go over the letter that we got from TEC, the latest one, so I can just go over the minor comments, in case you guys would be willing to do a conditional approval?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what the other folks, but for something like this, I wouldn't be comfortable doing the conditional for something of this size on Main Street without having everything squared away before we do it.
Got it.
I think we've been slipping a little too into the conditionals lately, and I'd like to stay away from it. And it's just, I don't know if you guys agree, but it's just, to me, it's just, you know, it's kind of a good-sized project, and I'd rather have all the Ts crossed and As dotted before we finish it up. This isn't, you know, we have another meeting in two weeks. You know, it's not, our meetings aren't too far apart right now, so that'd be my feeling on it. Mr. Fertali?
I'm willing to do that. I'm willing to go either way. I mean, I don't have a problem. I mean, project looks great. I don't think it's going to have many issues, and I think we could probably go ahead with the conditions, but I understand your point, Mr. Chairman, as well.
I think we want to make sure we have Is dotted and Ts crossed on this one after we get the final review letter. Again, it's going to be a strong presence right on Main Street. If we miss anything, it's definitely going to be noticed and be heard about, and I think that protects you, the project, and the members of the board.
Mr. Lozotti?
Yeah, I would agree with that.
All right. So yeah, so I think, you know, we'll put this on for the next one, and hopefully at that point, we've got everything squared away, and we can take care of it then.
Okay. Sorry.
All right. Anything else?
One other request. If the board's not willing to take a conditional vote tonight, I understand the rationale behind it. Would the board be willing to move forward with a draft of a permit decision so that we made up some time on it?
Yeah, well, I mean, typically, if we're squared away, we usually have the conditions and whatnot put together for the next meeting, if we look like we have everything done, as we do for one of the other hearings tonight that we think may finish up. So that's typically, if you have something in particular that you're looking language-wise, you know, you can deal with that with the office and make sure that, you know, it reflects whatever it is that may or may not be your concern. But other than that, I mean, typically, the decisions aren't drafted in advance of the meeting or when we vote on them. So I mean, unless...
I can prepare proposed waivers and conditions and circulate those, for sure.
Yeah, I mean, that's...
I can't make any promises that I'll have the whole permit drafted, but I can absolutely have the primary points ready.
Yeah, no, that would be very much appreciated, and it gives us a chance to have reviewed those in advance of the next hearing session.
Are there a lot of waivers? I'm not familiar with...
We're just asking for one.
Just one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No condition.
Okay. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion to continue to January 22nd meeting?
At 7:20.
Second?
Motion made in second. It all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimous.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item D, that's 1438 Main Street. They've requested it be continued to our January 22nd meeting. We have them penciled in for 7:15. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, some discussion on that. I mean, in my opinion, this has been going on and on and on and on for weeks and weeks and months and months. So I think we need to get a resolution resolved in this thing. I know they're just discussing issues between the homeowners association and the applicant, but we need to get a resolve. It's on the agenda every single week, every single meeting we have, so I think we can get that notified, that we...
The email that I included in the packet is actually from Attorney Bornstein, where I did cite that it had been a while since those folks had been in.
Okay.
And they are asking for a bit more time to work with the HOA, and it looks like Attorney Bornstein may be here to speak live on it.
Sure.
I'm happy to respond to that, if you'll hear from me.
All right, we'll go ahead.
Very quickly.
But my only question is, at the beginning of this, I told people we weren't going to have any conversation about this.
So we don't have any...
So I don't want to do that. And it has nothing against you, but having told people they could leave because we wouldn't have any conversation, because we were just going to continue it, I don't want to then go back and not do exactly... to continue it, I don't want to then go back and not do exactly what I said we were going to do, so. I think Mr. Fattaya's thoughts on, you know, making sure that we have an understanding as to what's going on before we, you know, get to the next meeting, I think whether it be written or by appearance, my guess is that you'll be here because you're going to be here for the other hearing.
Yes.
So if that's the case, then, you know, we can talk about it, so we'll have some sort of live update next time, and that we will not just continue it to continue it without at least some discussion. Alright, is that, that fair?
Yes.
Alright, alright, so with that, we have a motion, can I have a motion to continue to 7:15 on the 22nd, please?
So moved.
The motion made of second?
Second.
Motion made in second, it holds in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, motion carries unanimous, thank you.
Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Alright, that brings us to agenda item E, which is 1879 Main Street, they have requested to be continued to our February 12th meeting. Do I have a motion to continue them, we don't have a time for that, do we? I don't have that one...
7:00 PM.
Can we have the motion to continue that till 7:00 PM on February 12th?
So moved.
Motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, it holds in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, motion carries. That brings us to agenda item F, which is 1600 Shawshin Street, this is continued from our 1218 meeting. Once you're settled, if you give your names for the record, the floor is yours.
Tanya Moore with National Development.
Matthew Cosso with Beals Associates, civil engineer.
Floor is yours, gentlemen.
Good evening, we are here to provide a general update, I know we were here a few weeks ago, gave you guys a previous update, have had additional discussions with the engineering division regarding the project, have made some progress, but I did want to do an overview of where we stand in the few of the open issues, just to give you guys this feedback. Ideally, we can close this out in the next couple of weeks and be in a position to receive a decision shortly, but obviously want to, want to note some of these issues for, for the group, just to, you know, full transparency and awareness, so we'll jump into it in respect of your time. Providing a site overview again, just to reorient everyone, I know it's been some time since we've previously looked at the plan. Current use is the H&amp;B Holton Bugbee mill facility, or their current facility, in which they manufacture and finish hardwood products, home products. We are proposing on Lot 1, a just under 200,000 or 190,000 square foot warehouse logistics facility, speculative, speculative, no tenant identified yet, but obviously an ongoing effort for us. So that's, that's what you see on the right hand of the screen in front of you, a little bit of zoom up here, just to show the layout of the site, and obviously the green space associated with just the landscaping improvements, but also some stormwater retention as well, truck court in the back of the site, and circulation all the way around for fire access. Also noting the reserved parking areas outlined on the right side of the screen there, one of the waivers that I'll reference later that, that we're looking for in terms of parking reduction. General notes, so don't intend to read through this and bore everyone, but just some, some notes for, for the group in terms of really just highlighting our back and forth, namely with the engineering division, it's been obviously many months, obviously there's some review periods in between there, requests for additional information, and then our resubmittals. Most recent activity is on December 1st, we submitted an updated package to the, to the engineering division in the town, updated drawing sets, stormwater management report and O&amp;M manual. We did get a quick turnaround in terms of comments, we received a comment letter back on December 15th, which, you know, contains some of the topics that we want to discuss today. For the most part, I would say if you go back to our, our first letter that we received in June of '23, there were around 40, 43 I think specific comments on that letter, the vast majority of those have been closed out, so we're really down to a handful of comments, really only three that I'm going to highlight to the group, the rest of them are, are things we can either just say yes to, or with a little bit of work, we think we can satisfy the engineering division. So the first one is, is stormwater management. It's a big comment that we did receive back from the engineering division, it really relates to their belief in, of our compliance with DEP regulations related to both the recharge and the capture of the stormwater produced on the site. This goes down to some, some nuanced discussions in terms of the standards within the DEP language on this, but essentially for, for new developments, you're tasked with capturing and recharging all of the stormwater produced in the site. As a redevelopment, obviously we have existing conditions, adjacencies, easements on the sites, utility limitations, and a big one also being groundwater height on the site that limits us from recharging and capturing all of the water that's, that's produced. And so there are some standards in the DEP language that allow for some, you know, leniency in terms of the extent met in terms of stormwater management, which we think is, is something that we've seen on previous sites before, our civil team agrees in terms of other projects, and something that, that we took into a consideration when we produced our stormwater management design. Obviously, it's a difference of opinion between our interpretation of those standards and the engineering division, which is the impasse that we currently have. For context as well, the requirement to be in a position to treat and recharge all of that stormwater would be a meaningful grade change across the entirety of the site, both this lot and the adjacent lot, to the tune of approximately four feet of grade raising average across the site. That's a, it's a meaningful import, both from a construction logistics perspective, also a financial perspective, and then this next screen will show you some of the limitations that just exist because of the nature of the site. Obviously, there's the proximity to the wetlands, there's, if you look in yellow, those are some easements that are associated with either the high tension wire lines that are adjacent to the site, or below grade gas easements that we, we can't make meaningful site improvements to, limitations of where we're putting the structure of the building, and other limitations noted in the color-coded legend, so we are dealt with a relatively limited footprint to be able to deal with some of this stormwater, and then again, as I referenced, there's a relatively high groundwater level at the highest point on the site, which limits our ability and our depth to capture and recharge all of that water. So we do think there are very real constraints on the site in terms of how far we can go with, with some of this stormwater recharge and capture, which is why we've, we've proposed the design that we did. So that's, that's the issue at hand, I would say in terms of our attempt to move forward towards a resolution, we are looking to the Conservation Agent and Commission to weigh in in terms of their interpretation of the DEP language, and we'll be visiting them to get their feedback on this matter, and hopefully help reach a, a middle ground with, with the engineering division comment. So that's our next steps moving forward, but did want to give you guys this feedback in terms of why this hasn't already been resolved to date, it's, you know, frankly, a very meaningful comment on our end that, you know, to, to meet to the fullest extent possible would make it very difficult for us to make this project a reality. So that is issue number one. Issue number two, not necessarily anything we're looking for, planning board support on, again, just looking for transparency here. One of the comments that we received in this comment letter was a note that, well, let me take a step back, if you recall in, in our meeting in mid-July of '23, we came to see clarity on whether a peer review on traffic study would be required, given the volume of adjacent traffic studies in this general area. It was determined that that wouldn't be the case for either Lot 1 or Lot 2, and so obviously we noted that in our response back to the engineering division. You know, some back and forth has occurred since then, the most recent comment on this 1215 letter indicates that, you know, understanding that a planning board might not require the peer review on the traffic study, it does note that DPW will require one prior to, you know, issuing a physical alteration permit. It's something that we were surprised to see, just given the non-discretionary nature of a physical alteration permit, you know, more of a, of a building permit in, in many ways, and so, you know, it is something that we would look to, to try to resolve prior to the final decision if possible, just so that we're not in a position, you know, down the road if a traffic study is required, and for some reason it, there's a difference in opinion in terms of the result of that traffic study, you like maybe in a position to have to come back to the planning board to figure out the resolution. And so it ties that zoning and, and site layout process to the non-discretionary permit that we'd be looking to receive as part of our construction efforts, and so...
Hold on, just so I understand though, if the DPW's requesting it, they're going to look at it for whatever it is they're looking for, and if they don't like it, they don't like it, and they're still going to hold up your permit?
Sure.
Whether we weigh in on it or not, right?
Agreed, I'm not, I'm not...
I mean, why would you need to come back, is what I mean, what would we be able to do?
Depending on the, the opinion on, on that peer review, and it requires a, a different layout in terms of our curving dimensions or, or whatnot may be the case, we, we just don't have that clarity now to see what the issue may be, and if it requires meaningful layout changes to solve the issue.
So you're not talking about the, the traffic study itself and the view of it?
No, just the solution.
You're talking about what might change because of it?
Exactly, but...
Okay.
So, so that's the only concern, is that it kind of brings you back to the zoning process if you get to that point, so obviously something we want to resolve prior, I don't think it'll hold up technically the decision from the planning board as a result of the, the planning process, but just something we wanted to note, is something that we're, we're trying to work through prior to a decision.
Excuse me, the other alternative is just do a traffic study when we're done? Yeah, but that's not the problem.
They did do the traffic study, but the board had elected not to require the peer review.
I thought we said not to, not to have it done.
Correct. The peer review, yeah.
Correct.
I understand. I thought we said that, because there was enough to be done in the area, right?
That was, that was our thinking.
Right, the DPW wants to have it peer reviewed for some reason. Yeah. Oh, they're going to hold it up?
And so the, the third issue to raise, not necessarily an issue, just something to, to give you guys some context on, oh, these got out of order here, all of these on that. So on the, the north section of our site, specifically the, the curb cut associated with the, the truck turn into the, into the project, on the screen now shows our current design, which is roughly 80 feet in distance across that, that pedestrian walking path on that curb cut. This, this version of the design is meaningfully reduced from the original submittal to the, to the DPW, which was roughly 130 feet. Bring you back to the previous slide, which shows the existing condition being about 140 feet in length, and so we do feel our current design at 80 feet is a meaningful improvement, have not necessarily met the, the goals of the, the engineering division in terms of what they'd like to see here, what they've asked us to study is something closer to what they call a boulevard-style curb cut. Essentially what this does is using a kind of a center median creates an area of refuge for a, a pedestrian that's crossing that, that curb at, at that moment. Unfortunately, and what I have here in front of you is, is a truck turn study that shows some of the difficulties, what it's doing is overlaying our current curb cut with some form of median, and we'll say, acknowledging this isn't the final design of what a boulevard curb cut may look like, but what it does show is, because of the geometry and the angle of the site as it relates to Shawshin Street, you can see that these trucks, and they're highlighted in yellow, would have a difficult time making that turn with that center median, would be a conflict unless you move that median further into the site. And so that boulevard-style scenario could create two conditions, one, you would have in aggregate, when you add up those two crossing paths from the center median to the right side or the center median to the left side, a much larger curb cut than 140 feet to allow for that, that radius for the truck to turn in, or you would have a scenario in which a pedestrian has to turn into the site, we move that center median further inboard into the site, cross the curb cut, come back out and, and along Shawshin Street, so from our opinion, not necessarily the best pedestrian experience, and doesn't provide a meaningfully shorter curb cut, but does, is something that the engineering division wants us to study, so that's one of the open items that we're trying to find a better solution. Functionally, it doesn't do anything to the site from a, from a trucking perspective, we just don't believe it's, it's the best curbing condition and the least impactful, but obviously something that we have to work through with the engineering division.
Just, I'm sorry, just to back up one question. Currently, the, the opening is how far?
About 140 feet.
So currently someone crossing the driveway has to go 140 feet?
That's right.
Without any islands of refuge?
Correct.
No crosswalk either.
And the version you, you were down to was what, 80 feet?
80 feet, correct.
Okay.
And so those are really the only issues that we wanted to highlight today, what I have on the screen here is just a bit of a refresher in terms of special permits, waivers, and two notes on what we think likely may be conditions of approval, obviously some, some conditions for you guys to weigh in on. The three special permits listed above were all outlined in our initial meeting, one is use, one is a, is a special permit on height, another one is that parking reduction that we're looking for with that 30% reduction using the parking reserve area.
Can I just back up for one second?
Sure.
Because I guess I'm just sort of babbling. You know, my math is terrible, but at, at 140 feet, if you were to drop one of these islands in the middle, about how far would someone have to go before they got to that island?
I mean, usually you'd drop it somewhere in the center, so you're looking at 70 and 70.
70 feet?
Yeah.
And the new opening is 80 feet?
Correct.
Okay, sorry. Moving on.
The, the second special permit is for the height, last one is that part, or third one is that parking area I referenced, and the fourth one is, is just a special permit to reduce an interior driveway, which really is only used for, for fire access on the site. Also have a waiver that we're asking for in terms of continuous edging and curving along the landscaped areas, largely to do with our stormwater design and accommodating it, and then I think the, the one that might require the most attention is just the waiver on, on snow storage area, we're proposing to have that within paved area, we just feel like it's a, it's a better system in terms of capturing everything that's going to go into that stormwater system, having it on the paved surface, as well as just preserving the landscaped area that usually has a hard time surviving kind of that snow storage scenario, so it is something that we, we have out there, but obviously if there's any additional information we need to provide to, to accommodate that waiver, we're happy to do so. The last two are conditions of approval that, based on the engineering comments and, and, you know, the practicality of being that we'd like to form as conditions, one being the approval is conditioned upon having assigned SWIP, which makes sense prior to construction, and the, the last one being a consent agreement between ourselves and the next project, which is Lot 2, the H&amp;B side, which really just dictates that the stormwater system that is agreed upon and designed cannot be meaningfully altered without planning board and engineering division approval, which we're happy to do. And that is, that is Lot 1.
Alright, any, start with Mr. Lozotti, any questions on this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, just touching on the, kind of the snow storage question a little bit, I see that at least for Lot 1, you have 148 proposed spaces plus 64 in reserve, but the potential you lose 21 of those spaces to, to snow storage.
Sure.
If you start to run into parking problems prior to building the reserved spaces, I'm assuming you would move the snow off of the parked spaces, do you have a plan where you would move it to?
The site is somewhat constrained, we can certainly present something as an alternate for, prior to coming in for a decision. Obviously, parking would not be the ideal scenario, but you'll see from a hardscape perspective, part of the, the reason that we're dealing with limitations from a, you know, storm perspective is because there's relatively little footprint when you think of all the encumbrances on the site, so we can certainly present something, I wouldn't say I have one off the top of my head, unless you have one.
Simply with, so a lot of these warehouses, just, you know, tenants use different spaces, you know, we put in these trailer areas, we put in extra parking on maybe one side of the building where the tenant's not using all those parking, but they use more trailer spaces, or you have a tenant that doesn't use as much trailer spaces but uses the parking, so you can play around with where that snow can go. If in, in fact, that the places max out, every car spot's full, every trailer spot's full, then we just see that these, these tenants will just remove the snow, they'll have it trucked out, or they'll bring a machine to melt it on site and deal with it that way. I mean, the primary function of these things is so that a trucking facility, a warehouse facility, is that the trucks can move in and out without any issue, so dealing with snow is, you know, is one of their top priorities, because it's something that can impact their operations.
Which I believe is how we've currently laid out the O&amp;M, to reflect that scenario and that obligation, but, but obviously, you know, if we want to show a physical space, we can certainly provide an option, just for consideration.
I have no further questions.
Mr. Fattaya?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So how far are we out apart from DPW and engineering? I mean, is it a lot, big distance, or are we able to work? Say 140 versus?
I do think that...
I'm talking about some of the other issues as far as stormwater and all that stuff, but I mean...
The ones that we mentioned are the ones that are on, on this list that we showed you today.
Well, combination of all of them, I mean, are we...
I would say any of the comments that aren't on this list are things that we can resolve in, in a matter of weeks, nothing that's outstanding. The one that's probably the, the longest from a timeline perspective is we are agreeing to one of their comments, which is to perform additional test pits on the site, that's, that's actually work in place that we have to put and have analyzed and, and, you know, report back and make sure it complies with our current stormwater design, so that's probably the longest leading edge in terms of the, the other comments that are not on this list. And then the, the biggest one that I would say potentially could be a timely process, depending on how it plays out, is this stormwater scenario, and, you know, we're, we're hoping that through the conservation process and the Conservation Agent Commission, that[1759.33] Agent Commission, that we're able to reach a middle ground and an understanding, or at least a ruling, that our interpretation of the standards, which we feel pretty strongly on, are agreed upon by the conservation group. If that's the case, then, you know, I'm sure there'll be some back and forth with the conservation team and the engineering division. But aside from the stormwater one, I think all the rest of the comments are things that within some back and forth in a couple of weeks, we can work through with the engineering division.
Okay. Because we've been going on this project for months and months and months.
Absolutely.
And you guys have not come in for a number of weeks and so forth. So having myself personally, I won't speak for my colleagues, but remembering everything that's been going on?
Sure.
Is difficult with all the information and paperwork that we have.
Absolutely.
So you keep submitting new stuff and new stuff, but I mean, Mr. Collins, it's not easy, is it? But, I mean, I understand, you know, what's going on and, you know, in the space between everyone's agreements and not agreements, but... So with that, do we have any potential tenants?
Not yet.
No?
We do have, well, I will say we have tenants that we're speaking to, but nothing to the extent of an LOI or anything that's official that we can announce publicly or consider a full deal. But they're certainly interested in the site, which we feel great about.
So I have some old notes here, back from probably November or something.
Sure.
The watergate valves, has that been resolved?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Okay. How about the pump station? Was that resolved?
Yes. So that's a Lot 2 item, but yes.
Yeah, okay.
On that one, yes.
I don't know. It's one and two. I mean, it's like, I'm looking at it as one almost, but...
Absolutely.
So those are resolved. I had them on my list here, so, you know, list of waivers, I have that on my list, but we went through that. So with that, I'm all set right now. Let's see how it winds out, but good.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The curb cut issue and the boulevard design versus an open design, how wide is that boulevard median?
That median, I would imagine, or Heather could answer this on my behalf.
For the record, Heather Monacup with GPI, where the traffic engineers for the proposed project. The median has to be a minimum of six feet wide to provide the pedestrian refuge that the DPW is looking for. So what you saw in that plan shaded in blue was a six-foot-wide median. They'd probably like larger, but we started with the minimum just to see where that put us.
So that gives us an 80-foot driveway entry minus six feet, so...
In likelihood, this is just showing it overlaid onto an 80-foot scenario. We do believe that curb cut in totality is going to be much larger than 80 feet in the boulevard scenario because we have to deal with these truck turns and how they interact with that median.
Because the curb line of the truck entering there, as you see on the left, would go out, so that lengthens that as part of the pedestrian crossing. And then we'd have to probably shift the median down a little bit to accommodate the left turn out once we push the, once we cut it back so that nothing's in the way. So the width of the driveway is going to get larger and the radii connecting to the roadway is going to get larger, and that just makes the pedestrian crossings a bit larger than what you see on the plan here. We have more work to do with the DPW to show that, but we just wanted to show you this plan tonight to show that, you know, the, there must be a break in that median with a piece, the nose of the island, of the median island must protect the pedestrian along with the rest of the island that goes into the site. So we've got to find a spot where there's refuge to protect the pedestrian on both sides.
There needs to be a raised curb.
Raised, exactly.
Or it can't be a squirted concrete or something like that. To the back, to our very original design, so 140 is what it is right now for Holton Bugby. You can see it's a large fence out there, then it has a gate to where the entrance is. Our original design, we had about, I think it was 120-foot wide. Our road just kind of came straight out sideways. We were about 120. The engineering department said that that was too big. It took somebody too long to cross that. They needed to have that pedestrian refuge in the middle. So we altered the alignment. We kind of curved it down. We tightened up our radii closer towards the town standards, and then that brought it down to this 80-foot measurement. So we knocked about 40 feet off that entrance right there for this. That's why we think this is our best approach at this entrance. 80 feet is adequate for somebody to make it across that driveway. And typically driveways don't even require crosswalks. We just think with our use that it's a much better scenario to have a crosswalk in addition to the stop signage that we have there.
So kind of what I was driving at is I can think of two similar Broadway, I'm sorry, boulevard-style entries. We have one at Wamisit Place, which leads to Walmart. I would imagine they have really large trucks pulling in there. And another at where Planet Fitness Big Lots is. So my question is, if they can make it work, what are those, is it just because 38 is, like, what is it about 38 that makes it more accessible that you can't make it work here?
Yeah, I will say, without studying those, to understand the differences, I think part of it is just the geometry of the site as it relates to Shawshin and that the width of Shawshin as a road. So it doesn't provide, the road itself doesn't provide a lot of turn radius for these trucks, so they're making up a lot of that turn radius as they actually enter the curb cut. And then just that tapered geometry as well, it doesn't make the scenario any easier.
Okay.
And we're trying to accommodate a WB67-designed vehicle. Again, I'm not sure what those other driveways had to accommodate, and it's the trailer of that large truck that is holding where that curb line can go.
Understood. I mean, it sounds like you're battling two things for, you know, and the solution to each is in contradiction of the other. Making it easier for pedestrians and safer for pedestrians by minimizing the curb cut, but then, you know, the trucks still need to get in there, so...
Completely agree. And that's why we do believe in earnest that this is the best scenario because the path of travel overall is the least, you know, impactful to pedestrians in what we've designed here, understanding they don't have a place to stop mid-block, but their path of travel overall is actually shorter. So we do think this kind of meets both objectives. The other thing we're considering is, we're obviously not allowed to cross with emergency vehicles that center striped line, so that's another limitation in just terms of the angle of the driveway into the site.
So if we're doing 80-foot curb cut, no boulevard design?
Sure.
If you have a truck waiting to exit the site, and then you have a truck coming from the Andover side waiting to enter the site, based on this geometry, they wouldn't be able to pull in until the other truck exits.
They're not making that turn.
But if the other truck is taking a left, how are they going to get out if there's an oncoming truck?
I think I understand your question. They should have the ability to make that left out where the truck queued. They won't be able to make that turn in, so the truck can get out but can't necessarily come in the curb cut while there's one queuing.
Yeah, the truck on Shawshin would have to wait for the other truck to exit.
Okay. So even then, the 80-foot is not a perfect solution, but if I recall from previous meetings, there's not going to be a lot of in-and-out traffic happening.
Based on our volume and our use.
Okay. And just as a point of reference, you know, I know there was recently a situation in Andover where a young girl was killed by a truck, and they talked about sightlines and mirrors and things like that. So, you know, we do want to make sure we get this right and that, you know, we don't ever have a similar incident in our town or on your site, so...
Absolutely. I will say, for that point, because it's an excellent point, we do have, and it's not shown here, a full sightline study for trucks and vehicles as well. That's definitely something that both ourselves and the DPW, to their credit, paid very close attention to.
Okay. Other than that, it sounds like we have to wait till Conservation Commission weighs in on the stormwater, raising the entire site four feet. Is this something that is only being triggered by this particular use? Or if we were to level the site and try to build anything, would we be running into the same kinds of problems as far as you'd still have to go up four feet?
It's, no, it doesn't have anything to do with the use. It's strictly just an impervious area. If you're reducing the impervious area on the site, then you can be treated as a redevelopment. If you're increasing the impervious area on the site, then you're considered new development regardless if it's, you know, a warehouse use or residential use or anything like that. For the most part, this is really just an interpretation of the standard. We believe that the standard's clear because it says these standard 3 regarding recharge is to the greatest extent practical. We've met that, and then we've exceeded all the other standards. And due to our site constraints, we've done everything that we can to the extent practical. So I think, we've had some conversations with them. I think we're close to getting that answer, and if not, then we're going to, you know, the Conservation Commission will weigh in.
And based on the verbiage in your proposal or in your presentation tonight, I'm sorry, you're doing better than what is currently being done as far as stormwater recharge?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Stormwater recharge especially, there's zero recharge on the site right now, and then furthermore, there's no water quality really on the site right now. So everything we're doing is a vast improvement upon what's there. I mean, Billy's done a great job maintaining the site, but, you know, when it was designed, you know, that many years ago, these regulations weren't in place. And the regulations are evolving, and, you know, more regulations are coming, and DEP's working on things like that, so...
Okay. I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, nothing really to add. I mean, obviously there's outstanding issues, you know, you're going to have to sort them out one way or the other. And, you know, obviously it'll take a little bit of time. I mean, it's a bigger project, so, I mean, I understand that some of this stuff takes time. You had other stuff to deal with before, so, you know, I'm not that surprised. Yeah. I mean, the only thing I would say on the snow removal thing is that, I mean, you know, at a bare minimum, if we're going to have to, you know, consider some potential alternatives, it'd be easier if you just give us what the alternatives are. You know, it's this, then if we're going over here, or it's truck it out, and we put that all in there to say, if the snow remove, I mean, the snow storage becomes, you know, more than can be handled on site, this is what, or where it's shown now, this is what's going to happen, or it will be trucked off, and that can all be done in one, you know, and then we have it all as a condition.
Absolutely.
So it'd be easier if you kind of put that together and bring it in, because, you know, the version that I think, you know, that you ran through, well, they'll do this, they'll do that. And that's sort of like, okay, but, you know, it's not, doesn't say that anywhere other than it was just said that that's what will happen.
Sure.
You yourself already said you don't know who's going to be there yet because you haven't got a tenant. So, you know what I mean? It's easier if we have that stuff kind of squared away, and then they know when they come in, these are your, you know, these are your marching orders.
Absolutely. The only comment I'll say to that is that it is in our O and M, which we are obligated to comply with, obviously, and provide to our tenants. So it will be a regulation that is an obligation of our tenant, whoever that may be, once it's in the O and M. But understood in terms of more information, in terms of practicality, how is this going to take place and what alternative we can have. We can certainly have that as part of our next presentation.
All right. So with that, I'll open up the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on Agenda Item F?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman, too.
Mr. Vitale?
Yeah, I have a question. So with that boulevard scenario, do you foresee any trucks hitting that boulevard coming in?
We would have to make it to the answer is no, because it wouldn't be, it wouldn't serve its purpose if it was mountable. Usually in that scenario where you have to have a truck kind of mounting a curb like that, you'd have a tapered curb. Because this is a protection point for the pedestrians, we would not have a design that would allow for that to happen.
We had a previous site in town where the fire department was running over the curb, and we had to take it out because of some not-that-good drivers, I think.
Absolutely.
But they took it out for that reason, and now it's gone, so...
Absolutely.
So just curious, but...
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. So with no one else, with no one in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this, we have a motion to continue this to 7:25 on the 22nd.
So moved.
Our motion made. Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion made second. All favors identified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. That'll bring us to 1600 Shawshin Street, Lot 2.
Daniel Moore with National Development.
Matt Cosso with Beals Associates.
And so Lot 2, I know we recently talked about Lot 1, very similar in terms of background, so I'll be brief in respect of everyone's time. Site overview on the screen, more particularly talking about the H and B portion of the site. We call it the dumbbell portion from a parcel perspective in terms of shape. Storage facility's on the right of the screen, central access point in the middle, and the mill building on the left side of the screen, which is where the majority of the work will take place. The structure on the right side of the screen is mainly just for non-occupiable storage. General notes, again, very similar to the previous presentation. Won't get into the specifics of it, but similar to the Lot 1 presentation, we did receive a letter on December 15th. Thankfully on this letter, or on this project and lot and letter, there are, I would say, less meaningful open comments. So same amount of progress has been made, I think 46 to start here, only a handful of items. Most of them, we can just work directly with the DPW, don't really need to raise anything. I would say the only meaningful one on this is the stormwater management one. The same standards that are being cited on the Lot 1 project also relate to Lot 2, almost identical in terms of the crux of the issue, the DPW not feeling that all the recharge and capture requirements are being met. Our team obviously feeling that we are meeting them to the maximum extent practicable to make the project a reality, and we will be working with the Conservation Department or the Conservation Commission and the agent to get a kind of a third interpretation on that and hopefully push things forward using that alley. One other to bring up, again, just as a reminder for the group and a refresher for the planning board, a few special permits, waivers, and conditions on this site as well. Special permit for use, special permit for multiple principal structures, which I know is a new one based on the most recent town meeting. We do have two principal structures that are separated between the storage building and the mill facility. And similar to Lot 1, a special permit for the reduction of parking count. You know, a little bit different on this lot versus Lot 1 in the sense that this is a known tenant and the current tenant on the site that has a very good understanding of their employment roster, as well as the projection for how that roster will be downsized in the new facility. So they do have the data to support the parking reduction. Also looking for a few waivers, one being a separation waiver in terms of space 500 feet from building entrance to the parking, that secondary parking lot by the storage facility that we're looking to create. Similar to Lot 1, another continuous curbing waiver, again, just to comply with our stormwater layout and design. And then another waiver to utilize, well, the waiver is to place a driveway within 50 feet of an intersection. Background on this waiver is that that driveway is an existing location, so we're really just looking to utilize the driveway as it exists, very minimal modifications in terms of width or location of the driveway. And then similar to Lot 1 as well, a waiver to locate the snow storage areas within paved areas, understanding that for our next meeting, we can come a little bit more prepared in terms of providing alternatives and some additional support in terms of how that'll actually take place should the snow storage remain in the paved areas. And again, identical to Lot 1, two conditions that we've identified for consideration. One is tying a conditional approval for the SWIP and order of conditions, and then another condition of approval for that Lot 1 and 2 stormwater management consent agreement, just given the interrelated nature of the stormwater design.
All right. Mr. Lozardi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So yeah, just kind of a similar question to the same as the last lot. I know you kind of touched on, this is an existing business. We have a better understanding of what the actual parking demand will be. So just to confirm, the 128 spaces, even assuming that you would lose some for snow storage, that's more than sufficient for kind of the proposed use case here?
Yes.
Okay. That's great, and I think the only other thing I had looked like for signage, is there a signage plan here? Is it just relocating the existing sign over? Is there anything else?
So, you know, there will be two signs we've identified. They are part of that submission, or resubmission that had that master signage plan. Namely, it's just relocating, it's a historic sign just based on the age of the business, relocating their marquee sign on the facade of the structure itself, relatively small, pin-mounted letters, nothing too meaningful. on the facade of the structure itself. Relatively small, pin-mounted letters, nothing too meaningful. And then I think what will be a little bit more visible is that entrance sign that you currently see on the site will just be relocated to this other section where their new driveway, entrance driveway will be. Aside from that, no meaningful signs. We will have some wave finding that I think is noted as well in terms of signage for the access down that alley when people are either walking or moving in and out of it. So we do have some intermediate signs within the site itself, but in terms of building signage that's visible from the right-of-way, just limited to those two signs that I mentioned.
Follow-up questions, eh?
Mr. Fattia. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not many questions. I just, I know the stormwater issue is going to be coming about and hopefully resolved sooner than later. So this building here is the existing building at Holt and Bugbee, correct?
This building is a relocated building for Holt and Bugbee. It sits within the footprint of where an existing building also sits, but this will be an entirely new structure.
New structure, okay, all right. So the entire, the other part of Holt and Bugbee will be continuing as, as it is, right, Mr. Collins? No? Will the Holt and Bugbee operation still be continuing as it is now?
Yeah, we'll be doing milling in this building, storage in the front building, and what we won't be doing anymore is curb line.
Oh, okay.
So when you used to put sticks down, that won't be being done.
I did that years ago. I don't know if I told you that, but it was the worst job in the world, and I won't mind saying that either. So, but I'm all set. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Champ.
Other than, you know, again, dealing with the stormwater issues with Conservation Commission, I think everything is, you know, is lining up as best as possible, and if we get the waivers squared away, I see no other issues. So I'm all set for now, Mr. Chairman.
All right. The chair's all set as well. Anyone in the audience with any questions or comments on Lot 2?
Mr. Chairman, I only wanted to note for the snow removal plan, building in some timelines for trucking snow offsite if necessary, because in discussions with the building commissioner, who has experience in plowing snow, the first thing he always says is, during that first day of the storm, thinking of yesterday, nobody's thinking about trucking snow offsite. So making sure that there's a really good contingency plan for what you're going to do the day it all falls, and then, you know, bringing in the melters or trucking it offsite to, and really, it's in the, in the name of making sure that whomever is occupying that building has enough space for their employees, so nobody's parking on safely.
Absolutely.
All right. No comments from the audience. Right back to the board. It was the pleasure of the board.
Make a motion to continue our hearing till the 22nd.
All right, at 7:30.
Second?
Motion made second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimous. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
That brings us to Agenda Item H, 770 Main Street. The applicant has requested that we continue to our meeting on the 22nd. We have them penciled in for 710. Have a motion made, made the second?
So moved.
Yes, made. Motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. That brings us to Agenda Item I, 913 East Street, continued from our 1218 meeting. Once everybody's settled, names for the record, the floor is yours.
Jim Hanley, Civil Design Consultants.
All right. So we were last here on October 16th. We presented this three-story storage facility building and associated parking lot. Since then, we've been working on addressing comments we received from the town's peer review consultant. We just received a letter from them today, which I believe we've addressed all their comments. We got a clean letter today. So just want to give you a quick recap of the project here. So we're proposing to raise the existing structures on-site and construct a three-story storage facility with a building footprint of approximately 11,000 square feet. We are proposing a reduction of a total impervious area of approximately 400 square feet. For stormwater management, we're proposing all-new closed drainage system. They'll collect runoff from the site and a portion of East Street, and that will discharge into an existing on-site drainage basin. Additionally, we are proposing a subsurface infiltration system. They'll collect runoff from the roof area and will recharge into the ground below the parking lot. And lastly, at the last meeting, you guys had requested a bike rack, and we have provided that on this latest set of plans. So with that, happy to take any questions.
All right. We'll start with Mr. Fattia.
Mr. Chairman, I'm all set. Everything looks great. I think we've resolved some of the issues with TEC, and fire department's fine with their turning radius, right? Correct?
Correct.
So, with that, I'm all set.
All right. Mr. Champa?
Similarly, it seems like town engineer is, is happy with the responses, so I have no questions and no wishes.
Mr. Lozotti.
Same. No questions from my side.
I don't have anything specific. Ms. Ladder?
No?
All right. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this?
Do we have any waivers?
So we have the sheet.
Oh, that's right.
Give it to us today.
Yeah, there were two waivers.
Yeah. So just, so have you seen this?
Yes. You gave that to me today, right? Yeah.
Is there any questions, issues with that?
No.
Okay. We need to resolve the parking thing first?
Yeah. So I just would like, I know, for the record, a formal acknowledgement that this, based on the ITE data that they provided, and looking at a more creative solution to what the parking requirement would be, because letter of the law, you would not be able to reduce it to the 12 spaces they have proposed, but if you look at it from a different perspective where the upper floors aren't, they don't have drive-up garages. So taking that into account and just getting a formal acknowledgement from the board that this calculation works, that the minimum required could technically be six spaces, and they're providing 12. And the only other note that I have here is I had only noted one waiver for this, so, in re-reviewing the materials, and perhaps I missed the second one.
The second one was the parking. Is that not?
That's a special permit.
Okay. The reduced parking. Okay, got it.
Yeah.
So it's just the one?
Perfect.
All right. So the members have seen the parking calculation?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So you want to do this as a, as a motion, then, that this, that we accept? Okay. So can I have a motion that the parking calculation as, as presented to us tonight?
Can I, I just want to clarify. So we do have the setback, the parking setback from the property line, which was, it's supposed to be 10 feet. We're at 9 feet. That is one of the waivers here, right? Just want to make sure that we capture that as well.
If you have it in your notes, that's fine. I didn't see it.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
So that was the one waiver.
Yeah. So we talked about this originally as well, that the existing edge of pavement was nine feet from the existing property line in this location right here where these nine spaces are. We just held that existing edge of pavement there. So it was, it was that, and then the parking were the two items that we needed to capture. The number of spaces.
Yeah. Yep. So the, yeah, capturing was really just the, the board acknowledging that that's a, that that's what they'd like to accept as a calculation. If it were to be a formal reduction, that's a special permit, and then we'll note that the setback for the pavement. Yep.
Okay.
Do we have a section for that? Yeah, so you can do that while we do this. All right. So I have a motion, can I have a motion to accept the parking calculation as submitted?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made, second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right. So any other questions, comments before I look to close? Are we good?
I have the section for that waiver if you needed it.
What is it? And that's for the setback?
For the parking.
To nine feet from?
From 10 feet.
From the 10 feet, right?
Exactly.
All right. So with that, I have a motion to close.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
All right. Motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. I would do the waivers first. So what I have is a waiver for Section 6.2.10H with the recommendation, as we have here, for prior to final approvals, the applicant shall at a minimum submit an interim as-built plan showing all-site features that have been installed to date, which includes, but is not, hold on a second, limited to underground and above-ground utilities, buildings, paved areas, walkways, landscaping, sidewalks. The applicant is enabled to submit a completed and final as-built plan at the time of occupancy. They should submit an interim as-built as described above, a cash bond with the amount set by the planning board to ensure the 100% as-built is submitted within six months upon our approval. And then, that was the only, that's kind of the odd one. Then there's the others that are listed?
Correct. Those are all conditions.
So the rest, you know, two through, two through six that are listed there. But I just wanted to do that one. All right. So that's waiver one, and then, do you want them separate? And then the second waiver is to Section 6.1.11(c), which is the reduction from the 10-foot setback to the nine shown on the plans. All right. So those are the two waivers. Do we have a motion on the waivers?
So moved.
You have a motion made, seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimous. As to the site plan review, special permit, land, do you want the land disturbance one separate? We keep doing it separate, don't we?
Yes.
The site plan review and the land disturbance permit both have simple majority thresholds, which is three members, and special permit is four if you're all in agreement.
All right. Let's do them by, let's do them by vote requirement, and that's just easier. So site plan review and the land disturbance permit. Do we have a motion on those?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Now, as to the special permit.
I'm making a motion. Will you approve the special permit at 913 East Street?
And that captures any of our, okay. So we have a motion made.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Gets one off the books. All right. That brings us to correspondence. We have one correspondence in our package regarding community outreach meeting notice for 686 Clock Road Marijuana cultivation.
Virtual meeting, Mr. Chairman, right?
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Oh, virtual. All right. So, but either way, that's our correspondence for this evening. That leaves us with other business not known at the time of the posting of this agenda. Do we have any such things? No one?
I'm all set.
All right. That leaves us with an adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made, motion made in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Good evening.